Call the meeting to order, everybody please rise and pledge.
In the name of the states of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds, just as we are.
Okay, we have a roll call, just note that we have everyone here tonight. And I'd like to announce that we had an executive session before the meeting tonight at 7:15 to discuss potential litigation. Before you move into the superintendent's report, I don't have any forms, I don't think, but does anyone have a public comment at this time? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. At this time, I would like to have Michael Lane come up, if you would please, I know you have some people with you, maybe you want to introduce something to them as well. Michael, basically to talk about the Tri-County Trails Study and how that will influence us at Pottstown, so, Michael, we have the floor.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Again, my name is Michael Lane, thank you for having us. I am the Regional Recreation Coordinator for the Pottstown Metropolitan Regional Planning Commission, and what that means is I write a lot of grants to fund park recreation trail development for the borough, as well as five municipalities around the borough. I also help with and assist the municipalities coordinate large recreation events, helping people understand their recreation resources and share what they have, and also coordinate large regional initiatives, one of which is the Tri-County Trail Study, which I'll talk about tonight. With me tonight is Ed Wagner, he is the Township Manager for Lower Pottsgrove, Herb Miller, he's a Commissioner for Upper Pottsgrove Township, and in the corner is Chris Hollinger and Kelly Mauer, and if you don't know them, shame on you all, because they own Brookside Family Restaurant, and on Sunday if you go, Herb Miller will pay for your brunch. So, Tri-County Trail Study, why are we here? Why trails? We have a lot of interest lately because of the preponderance of regional trails near our area, the Perkyomen Trail up on the east side of Pottstown, I think you can see over here on this side, Skookel River Trails going by Pottstown, and the Horseshoe Trail that goes into French Creek State Park. So there's been a lot of interest regionally, we're trying to connect to all those trails with our local and existing trails. There's been a lot of local attention, a lot of growing attention, as a matter of fact, the past two years Sly Fox Brewery has contributed $8,000 towards construction of segments of the Skookel River Trail with their own Skookel River Trail Ale that they made just for the trail. There's been a lot of interest for that. Also, I gave you a handout earlier, it's supposed to be on your table. The handout talks about a little bit of the history of the trail, a little bit of the trail alignment, and four schools that I went to that have public trails on their property. I compared the trace of them for you, I visited them all, just like last month, and then I gave you a summary. These are the trails, Regional Trail, Wissickon Trail, Germantown Academy, 10-foot wide, compacted earth, 202 Parkway Trail at Montgomery Elementary School, it's a 10-foot wide asphalt trail. There's a local trail in Lower Gwinnett Township, Wissickon High School, that's a 10-foot wide crushstone trail that's around the recreation facilities through the woods, they have nature programs through there, and Detwater Road Trail, that's also 10-foot wide asphalt trail by the Doc Mennonite Academy. The Tri-County Trail Study started before 2014, it's been an idea for a few years with many of the municipalities around Pottstown, and they got together with some of the planners from Montgomery County, they got a grant, they enlisted Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission's help to put together a study, and this is the study here, it's almost finalized. And we had a public meeting August 2nd to present that final study, and public comments are due back to me by September 2nd, and I think you were also aware, I also sent you that study as well for you to review if you wanted to. The project team was Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission and myself, with a whole lot of help from this project steering committee. Steering Committee was composed of planners from Montgomery County, Chester County, Berks County, Senator, I'm sorry, Representative Marcy Topol's office, Colbruckdale Railroad, Department of Conservation Natural Resources, Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation, a lot of the townships around the area, as well as Pottsgrove School District, and Shelley Fiole and Gary Durenzo was part of that original steering committee, now Dr. Shirk is taking up that as well. So where are we with the trail study? We are finishing up the trail plan, we have secured funding to implement four of the trail segments that were prioritized within the study at Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. We have $60,000 to go ahead and produce engineering drawings, we will select a consultant soon for that. Implementing trails, as you know, takes years and years and years, it could be a 10 to 20 year process, things change during that time, and one of the things that the study addressed was that they wanted to use public property and existing right of ways as much as possible before they got onto private property, and if we used private property, we'd only go forward with that plan as long as the owner was willing to negotiate and work with us. Yes?
All right, now, I read that, because I read the stuff that was sent to us as part of our packet, so, the question I had is, so if the plan only, if the plan only uses private property, if the owner agrees to it, what happens if the owner doesn't agree to it, doesn't that screw up the whole plan?
Well, in some respects, we do have some alternates built into the study, we can go back and look at ways to realign the trail if we need to, but, no, things change, we realize that, it's a fluid document.
But if the wrong person says no, that could be a real crime, right?
It could be, it could be.
Okay, thanks.
So our schedule, over the past few years, we've had all of our steering committee meetings, we've had two public meetings, and then, as I stated, August 2nd, we had our last public meeting, we have 30 days for public to review. So really the goals of the trail study involve improving cyclists, pedestrian connectivity to schools, parks, commercial nodes, cultural attractions, and other destinations within greater Pottstown area, expand existing trails, connect the existing trails to Skookel River Trail. So we've completed most of the items that we were addressed to complete, getting the study done, the only thing we need to do now is develop the design engineering drawings for four trail segments, and then we'll try to go for funding to build them. These are the primary trail corridors. Conceptually, the first one is Coventry Trail, Coventry Township in Chester County, the next one is the West Trail, connects to the Skookel River, up through West Pottsgrove Township, Douglas, Berks Township, Upper Pottsgrove, then over to Douglas Township, then North Township. The next trail is Monta Toney Trail, doing more to Park, and then the next one that we're talking about is Pottsgrove Trail, that connects to the east side of Pottstown, goes up Pleasant View Road, and then across Booker to the high school. This is the final plan, you can see that there are some alternate routes and spurs that connect to other destinations. The Pottsgrove Trail. This is Pottstown right here, this green is the new initiative that the borough has started, Bike Walk Pottstown, it's under construction now, it's about a million dollar project, it should be done sometime within the year. We're connecting on the east side of that with the Pottsgrove Trail along High Street, two branches come from there, one along Scroggles Run Stream up to the high school, that's one alternate route that we could use, and then the other route is continuing down High Street over to Pleasant View, and then along Booker Road to the high school. And what that does is it collects many different types of cultural attractions, it connects to the schools, it connects to the parks, and it connects to all of the residential areas along this area, as well as Booker Road. The study identified the priority segment, and that priority segment is right here, this little inset that is right here in front of the high school. They identified a trail coming along the south side, close to the woods, and coming across the back of the parking lot, Brookside Family Diner, crossing Charlotte Street, then connecting up to Hollenbach Park up here through some residential streets that exist in Turnberry Farms. There's a spur connection to Sunset Park, so within this small area here, we have connections to parks, retail establishments, the school, residential areas here, here, across the street into Pottstown. The estimate for that project was $450,000. The township has started, Upper Pottsgrove Township has started to implement this section right here to connect from Charlotte Street up to Hollenbach Park, they will use existing streets, they'll put down some stencils with a bicycle on it so people know where to go to get to Hollenbach Park, they will have signage, they will have striping. This section here is a crossing at Charlotte Street, we also have a connection there from the shopping center, there's a spur from North Franklin Street, comes behind the shopping center and connects to crossing at Charlotte Street.
Will the crossing be some sort of bridge, or are they gonna cross?
So I will get into that as I move further along.
Okay.
Yep. And so this is the section that we're looking at here, high school, Brookside Diner, and the connection up to Long Glendale. I hope you can see this, it's a little dark, but this is an aerial view of the high school, the property lines are the black, this is Francis McLaughlin's private property here, this is the retail center here, and this is Brookside Family Diner. School lanes up here, Kaufman Road is here, this is Booker Road here. This next slide shows the proposed alignment as identified by the trail study, it goes from Scroggles Run or Booker Road, coming across inside the woods, along the edge, across the edge of the woods, all the way across the playing fields, backside of Brookside Family Restaurant, down Charlotte Street, then crossing over to Glendale Avenue. The dark blue is Scroggles Run Stream. Now this is a slide showing what the existing informal pathways are on the school now, so most residents are people who want to cut across this way, cut across Brookside Family Diner's parking lot, behind their storage area, jump over a little stream, go along the edge of the woods, further down the ledge of the woods by the bough fields, and they can either take two routes, down through the woods and into the private property here, and then come across a bridge and onto a school property, or they walk along the edge of the woods, around the rain garden, down through the parking lot, and then connect over to Kaufman Road. I've been through this section on weekdays, weekends, watching how residents and people use the trail along there, so they seem to be taking this route more than this established route here that's in private property. This is just showing where the flood plain line is, and it comes very close to the property of the school right at this edge. This next slide shows the existing formal trail, the trail identified by the study, and this yellow line is a compromise in between, where it shows that this trail is off of private property, it runs along the edge of the woods, down there to Kaufman Street. And so what that looks like in detail is Brookside Family Restaurant, the parking lot, Glendale Avenue, crossing over, running along Charlotte Street, back behind, and along the edge of the woods, going across the little stream with the bridge, and then coming up this slope and going along the edge of the woods. We've talked to Pendot.
Let me ask you a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, so it's all, there's no new trail that would be proposed to be built on the property, is that correct? So no existing trees and so forth, the brush would be cleared out?
I'll show you that as I move further along, but there will be, there might be one that I still want. So, this section here, this section here is Brookside Parking Lot. In concept, the trail would go behind, attached to the end of the sidewalk, and then run along Charlotte Street. We've talked to Pendot, that right of way is about 12 feet wide, because we were able to lower that speed limit to 25 miles per hour, I think you've seen the signs out there now, it used to be 40, we were able to put a crossing across the road. They are sure that we might be able to put a five-foot wide sidewalk across here, as long as this little bridge can structurally take that extra weight, so we'll have that evaluated. They would like to see a curb cross that sidewalk so that this is a little type of a barrier, cars don't, you know, are on the same level as people walking, but there are a lot of people walking along Charlotte Street. This is the section that would be crossing over to Glendale and connecting up to Hollenbach Park.
So wait, it's 25 miles an hour there now?
Yep.
Whoops.
That helps too, that's a good idea, because people are crashing my back all the time there.
This is the end of the sidewalk with Brookside, here's Charlotte Street, and this is just a concept of what the sidewalk would look like, I did not add the yellow flashing lights, the signage, or the crossover, striping to this, because I just wanted to let you see what this might look like, because Pendot will require more signage and more flashing lights because of that. As it moves past Brookside Family Restaurant, we're looking at a barrier, a fence, with a 10-foot wide stone trail, and this is a concept, these are my renderings, this is what I thought it could look like, I wanted to give you some images so you could at least relate to how big things were, you know, what people would look like to scale, and how close it would be to woods. So you're really looking at parking lot, existing tree, some barrier, some screening, then the trail 10-foot wide, then a little bit of woods before it gets to the stream. You go over the small stream with the bridge that goes into the school property and up the slope to the edge of the woods. And this section right along here is where the trail would continue across, behind the fields, and between the woods, and it would look something like this, it's basically a 10-foot wide stone trail, behind the fields, and between the woods, continues up further as it's moving toward the artificial turf field. Once it gets closer to the artificial turf field here, it would wrap around the rain garden, go between the parking lot and the woods, and then continue on by the detention basin to Kaufman Road. And so that would look something like this, so here's your fence with your artificial turf field here, the trail comes around, goes around the rain garden, down this lawn area, between this little bit of woods, and turns on the other side of the parking lot, and continues to the detention basin, then over to Kaufman Road down the slope. We probably need to extend the sidewalk to connect to the trail here. At this point, we're not looking at making any crossings to Booker Road, it's not within the scope of work, and also, it really wouldn't lead anywhere, there's not a sidewalk across the street, there's no trail in the road, so at this point, we're just looking at a scope of work from Kaufman Road up to Hollenbach Park, a whole section. You can imagine that developing engineering drawings takes a lot of information, so we're trying to gather as much information as possible, we're fortunate enough to get a plan of the existing conditions of the school. This is the area by Brookside, this is Brookside's, part of Brookside Family Restaurant lot, these are the existing fields, the edge of the woods. This is Francis McLaughlin's property, here's the edge of the woods by the fields here, and it turns down this way, this way, down toward the back of the parking lot and over to Kaufman Road, this is Booker Road, and this is the woods and the flood plain here. At this point, I'm able to take no questions.
Couple of questions.
Yes.
First question, the area that's going through the residential area, the Turnberry Farms, where you're putting the bike paths and stuff like that, will people be allowed to park?
Yes.
Okay. Next question is gonna be on the two here. Who is gonna be in charge of maintaining a particular property, making sure that dog poop is cleaned when residents don't clean their dog poop, making sure the fences are taken care of, making sure that the area is properly maintained over time?
And so what we were hoping to do, which was done in other areas, that there would be an easement established through the township, and then they would probably take over that maintenance of that public trail.
Now, would that easement also cover liability?
It would.
One question that I have has to do with security as it relates to the schools, I presume part of the reason you're giving us this presentation is we'll ultimately need to approve portion of the trail that goes through the high school?
Correct.
And Lower Pottsgrove Elementary as well, possibly, or no? Because I wasn't clear on that.
Lower Pottsgrove Elementary, that's along Booker Road, correct?
Correct.
There's an existing sidewalk there. We've talked to Pendot about moving forward with that connection from Gerald Richards Park all the way to the high school?
Right.
And take into account all those residences in the school, and we're looking at acquiring easements, you know, getting private property owners to agree to the trail, there's some pinch points where there's some major physical changes. We would eventually connect to it, probably connect to the sidewalk there, but I'm not sure how far in the future we would do that.
So you, so the only thing that you're looking for from us would be approval to go through the high school?
Correct.
So, so my question has to do with security?
Okay.
As it relates to going through the high school? Obviously, based on what you said, people are using a trail that isn't official, and they're cutting through the high school property anyway, but by doing this, we're facilitating greater traffic through the high school property during school hours, and thus, that's why my concern about security, as much as I wish that I didn't have to concern myself about that. Right now, if most people who want to visit the high school take a car?
Right.
Not cut through woods where they could camouflage undesirable things?
Right.
As they get onto our property, so that's why I'm asking, has that been thought about?
It has been, and I think that in the sheet that I gave you on my comparison and contrasting with the trails that have been on other schools, they really have very, if any, security problems. And what happens is more people, more eyes on the trail, self-police a lot of that. And so, one of the things we've also looked at with this alignment is keeping it as much as we could along the edge of the woods, so that people can see what's happening further ahead, there's nobody on the side of you, you know, in the woods itself, this trail will be pulled away so that you can see the surroundings around you. There's one section by Brookside Family Diner where you have to come up through the woods over the little stream, and that's a small section that we had.
And then going back to the maintenance question?
Yeah.
My development, which is the Southview Development, has a small trail that circumvents the outer edge of it, and it's very nice.
Okay.
The maintenance of it, though, has been spotty, particularly as it relates to branches overgrowing into the trail, you know, so, and cracks on the pavement, and I'm not on the homeowners association, I used to be, so, you know, I don't pay as close attention to it as I once did, but I guess my, my question is, you know, we're hoping that the township will maintain that, this is a little less than what makes me personally comfortable, like, the township will take care of this?
Right.
Would make me a lot more comfortable, the townships will take care of this, would make me a lot more comfortable.
That has never been discussed with the Board of Commissioners at all to date, this is the first time I'm hearing about it, that we would maintain it, it would have to be discussed.
There you go, okay.
So, did you know that if you go to any of the trails in Lower Pottsgrove, Upper Pottsgrove, I think that you'd be happy with what they look like? They're pretty darn neat and clean and tidy and maintained pretty well, branches pruned and, you know, trash cans up and that, otherwise, we really wouldn't be getting into this at this point in time. What Ed had just talked about with the Commissioners, you know, we're still in concept, we're still trying to get approvals from everyone, we're trying to get our way through and making sure that everybody understands and feels comfortable with the concepts at this point in time. So, yeah.
All right, I got an existing question to piggyback off of the security part, as the township discussed, possibly having some type of police force or something that's gonna have to ride the trails, because the road is connected to all these different areas, I'm sure that things could happen, or, and I know a lot of these trails sometimes have, when I looked up different areas, they have actual riding, police officers riding the trails, making sure everything is hidden, has the township discussed that as an additional expense you guys are gonna have to cover?
Are you pointing out to me?
Township. You're her, and the other one.
I've been a part of this since 1997, many of you weren't even in your seats. I'm very passionate about the trail system. In Upper Pottsgrove, we've been very aggressive, far above all the other townships, our trail system is about 90% complete, our police force patrols and maintains the safety, we haven't today any serious situation. Additionally, most of you know about the Arboretum on Gilbertsville Road, if you've never visited it, it's quite a, quite a thing to see, as a matter of fact, we had O.J. Roberts there today doing the rope, the rope, whatever you call that thing. What is it called?
Rope course.
Rope course. We have approximately five We have approximately five miles of trails. We maintain them. Now, this year, we've had sufficient rain, we've had tremendous heat and humidity, so we are continually trying to maintain the grass and the crabgrass that comes up through the stone. Other than that, we have a bush hog that takes care of the sides. You were mentioning the grass and the impact of bushes and trees.
Yeah.
That's our responsibility. So, our police force is cognizant. We have, as you know, we work very close with you people on Hollenbach Fields, and we're in touch with Gary. Gary now, as you know, we put in two eagle bridges, and now he can have his cross-country up there. I've seen your young people from the cross-country utilizing the trail that goes around our pond system. Eventually, they'll be able to run from this school across Glendale when the light changes, keeping them off most of the busy highways, and they'll be able to go to Prouse Farm, return, that's a ten-mile turnaround. They only have to cross three township roads. And even when we have the Arboretum's 5K, we're looking at an 8K, our fire police and our police are always there with cones, and we make sure everything is regulated. We're on top of the things in our township, believe me. And it's a pleasure to work with Gary Durenzis, this man here who fertilizes our lawns, thank you very much, because you people are using them, and we mow around the outskirts. So, it's a collaboration, it works, and very proud of you people giving us an opportunity to have it tell you how to connect. I myself, along with Michael, I've sat down at these ladies' wonderful restaurant. If you've never partake on a Sunday morning, you may have to wait, but the food's worth waiting for. I've sat there and watched people crossing their parking lot now to get across your school property. And I can even show you the path that they use, it's beaten down. So what we're trying to do is utilize what we think makes sense, common sense, to bring young people down from Turnberry safely into your property. I, I can't make it any simpler than that. This is a long-time thinking, and we got Ed here, he's the disciple to take it back to the township commissioners. I happen to be here because I'm passionate about this. We're talking about the health of people who are recovering from heart transplants and everything. They love the trails. And you all know that in 2016, Schuylkill River Trail was naturally the best trail in America. Think about that, in our state. So we're trying to connect. We also now are working with Douglas Burks. Think about that. Montgomery County, working with another county to circumvent waste management, to be able to come around into West Pots Grove, and then go to Memorial Park, and then went to the Schuylkill River Trail. Think about that. Thank you.
I just wanna follow up with your concern about the trail itself on school property. I made these renderings with stone. The standard in the study is ten-foot-wide asphalt trail, two-foot-wide shoulders, you know, clear about twelve feet high on each side. It can be whatever it wants to be. Our desire for it along the school is it would be useful for the school's maintenance staff for trails, it could double as, you know, a loop trail around the, the school itself. We're looking for something that can be driven on, it could be smaller, but we were thinking something wider that you could use for maintenance purposes, access, mercy access, especially to the rear of the fields.
And I, I had one last question on the, I'm not actually sure, I haven't been back there in a long time. Have, and they already discussed, or maybe that's in the future, as in the water table, as in how the range is gonna affect that area when you flatten out ten feet, or is it already flat ten feet? I have no idea about that.
So, most of it is already flat, ten-foot, with the R and L?
And I wanna make clear with my, that my questions aren't based on a pre-existing opposition. Far from it, I, I think trails are great, but I wanna be clear about what we're asked to do, when we're asked to do it, allow for public comment to come to us before we're asked to make a decision, and, and what the consequence would be if we were the sticks in their mud, which I presume we probably won't be, but, you know, how important it's going through the school to this project?
Well, they...
Is it critical? Mostly critical?
Yeah.
Is that, or, is there's no workaround? That's what I'm being clear, I understand.
Well, I just wanna show you that what happens is, once it leaves Pots Town, there are two spokes that come up. They both end up right at the intersection of Kaufman Road and the high school, because we're trying to get from the high school up to Hollenbach Park and beyond. We're trying to connect to regional trails with our local trails. So, we do have, if we're not able to do this through Pendott and, you know, other constraints, we could probably go up Sproglis Run, then connect off to Kaufman Road. The only other thing that we might be able to do is use Pots Town's blank walk pathways to go north and then connect on to Charlotte Street that way. So, there are some long ways around, but we're still trying to connect all the cultural attractions, restaurants, retail establishments, residences within this section here and across. That's what we're trying to do.
I just have to say I'm a hundred percent in. That is fantastic, this is a fantastic idea, and I can only imagine the work and the time it's taken to get to this, so thank you for that. I'm very excited.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that, Mr. Miller, you're absolutely right, those trails are beautiful. I've taken my dog on them many times, they're wonderful, and I just wish they were closer to my house, 'cause putting a muddy dog in my car for the ride home always stinks, but that's all right. He's happy when we're done, and it, and they're well-maintained, and everyone really seems to enjoy them, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I just looked at Ed one thing. You know, we all, I hear all the negatives as well as the positives. Mostly, it's positive. Real estate agents, well, you got some that are salespeople, and then you got those that just sit around and don't really sell all the different things that are contributing to a good life. Do you all remember Mike Marino, the county commissioner years ago? Well, Mike had a lot to do with putting in the Schuylkill River Trail. There were times when he would find out when they were gonna cross a creek or a river or whatever, he'd say, "Mike, we don't have the right bolt." And then, they didn't send the right nuts and washers. If any of you knew Mike Marino, he didn't stand for that. I won't explain some of the examples they used, but he used them. He said, "You're telling me that we're holding up this whole project over bolts, nuts, and washers? I don't wanna hear it. Get the hell out of my office. Get this thing done." Okay, so here we are today, 2016, number one trail in the country. Now let's get back to the real estate agents. It's a fact, Montgomery County doesn't sit on their buttocks and not examine all the situations that prevail when it comes to trails. And I know you guys, when you're going down 422, you see the bikers, you see the walkers, you see it being utilized. Okay, Mr. Salesman Reilder, what's it gonna do to my house? Is it gonna deflate what my house is worth? Are you kidding? We've done that. It increases the sale of a house by $10,000 if you're within a mile, a mile and a half of a trail. All these things have been done. Now let me tell you a little bit about Michael. How many have been to Delaware? How many have been to Rehoboth or Lewis? Let me see a show of hands. Oh, that's wonderful, three. Okay, why did I bring that up? When we interviewed Michael, I've been to, out of the twelve parks in the state of Delaware, and they're big on parks, he had a lot to do with putting in, like in Lewis and all the others that are prevailed today. Wonderful. So that's why, when we interviewed, we said, "You're the man, Michael. Bring us together, all the townships, so that we get this thing done." Those little Upper Pots Grove is sitting alone, building trails, but they weren't going anywhere. They weren't connecting to Lower Pots Grove, they weren't connected to West Pots Grove. Guess what? The vision now is, we're gonna do it. Now, the man there in the maroon shirt, we all know Evan, he's been... If you haven't, stand up, Evan. I don't know who you are. There's a man who's...
The camera wasn't on you at the right time.
Who's written time and again about the trail system in our areas. He's one wonderful... And then I, I ask people, "Do you read the Mercury?" "No." "Do you read the Redding Eagle?" "No." "Well, what the hell? How do you know what's going on locally?" "Oh, we got trails..."
They write signetoca posts.
Thank you very much. I knew I'd get it there somewhere. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, are you getting the message? Thank you.
I'd like to conclude this presentation. What I'd like to be able to do is come back to the board with some more definitive engineering drawings, so you could better see what the more formal options would look like as they come through the school, come through Brookside. And the township is going through and already attacking Turnberry Farms, so that's gonna be done here pretty soon. So, we will get to the point where we get some drawings together, I'd like to be able to come back to you, and if that's amenable to you and...
And when do you anticipate needing us to make decisions?
So, let's see, this is obvious, right here, probably closer to the beginning of next year.
Okay, so it's a happy year?
Yeah.
Before...
Yeah.
And all this other stuff is gonna happen regardless of, it's gonna, you're saying that the Turnberry portion of this is, it's started, it's gonna be done?
Yeah.
Regardless of any...
Well, that's the township, the township roads, and the township wants to get started making connections, and they have to do it anyway, Sunset Park to Hollenbach Park, so they're gonna do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's great. Thank you.
In the meantime, can we get information ourselves, Dr. Shirk, liability, cost, maintenance, upkeep?
I can forward you the liability rules for the state of Pennsylvania concerning trails, I can forward that to him, and...
Yeah, 'cause my, my thing is taxpayers are paying one way or the other, whether it's the township taking, maintaining it, or we're maintaining it, but the taxpayers are funding the district to provide education. If it works to connect the trails and so forth, that's great, but our primary focus needs to be education, so I would be very interested in the...
Okay.
So, let me make a suggestion. We'll wrap this up for tonight. If anybody else has further questions, they can compile them through maybe Dr. Shirk or Mr. Cardwell, whoever wanna do it. We'd get them all to Michael, and we'll have you back. Probably, I'd say, the first step would be the Operations and Facilities Committee.
Okay.
You know, to maybe hear the next round in more detail.
Okay, good.
With some answers to any further questions.
I can do that. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob, appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to action items regarding personnel, I just asked the board how they'd like to proceed.
I'd like to make the motion to be approved, all personnel, five, one, two, three, four, five, seven and nine.
So the motion is to approve items five-one through five-nine, holding out item five-six, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So back to five-six.
Okay, we ask that the, the district has to approve of supplemental appointments as submitted, five-six.
So move. Second. Motion and a second on five-point-six, any questions or comments?
I will give abstentions.
That means we still have a soccer coach.
Yeah, he still has a job, yes.
Okay, any questions or comments on five-six? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight and one abstention, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to action items under business, the district recommends you approve the renewal of sponsorship agreement with Mission Physical Therapy for the seventeen-eighteen school year asked presented.
I'd like to make a motion to combine six-point-one through six-point-four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for six-one through six-four. Any questions or comments on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to be approved, number seven, action items education. Yeah.
So seven-one, seven-one through seven-three?
Yes.
Point of order, shouldn't we wait for at least some version of Dr. Shirk's giving his report before we make motions?
I've missed a couple of things, we're going too fast, but it's too late, I didn't catch it.
Will you wanna back, back up a minute and...
I mean, in this case, it's not, it, it, it's, it's just a point of order.
It's a wish, it's a wish in the board at this point for me, so, I don't, I don't, I don't mind, you know, jumping in for action items under education. Obviously, we have conference attendance, three different versions, so I'm looking for recommendations for approval for all three.
So move.
But we already had a motion to combine and, and a second, so...
Any questions or comments related to seven-point-one through seven-point-three then? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So hopefully, I'm not stealing any of Dr. Shirk's thunder here. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the welcome back ceremony that we had today for all of the district staff, administration, faculty, and, and additional staff at the middle school. It's the first one that I've been in attendance to. I'm happy to say, and sorry to say, at the same time, in four years, the first one that I've been able to attend. But what a great ceremony it was, what a great function it was. I walked into that building at eight o'clock, and I could not hear myself talk, the buzz was just overwhelming. Everybody happy and charged to see each other, I'm sure many for the first time in a few months, nine weeks exactly, we pointed out a couple times, right? It seems to be getting shorter and shorter, but what a charged group of people, what a pleasure it was for me to be there, and I just wanted to say, great job to Dr. Shirk and the rest of the administration who put that on. Great job to the faculty and staff who brought a hundred and fifty percent enthusiasm to the function. It was a great thing to see, great, great function to, to be a part of, so... It was a great thing to see, great, great function to be a part of, so thank you.
Just to add, I think that, you know, as I was sitting there today and watching this, our event, the welcome back event, I think all of you as board members would be, would be very proud of what we saw today. There was complete collaboration, you know, with our custodial maintenance and ground staff, all our support staff, that was evident. The faculty was supported, and of course, you know, Matt represented you as the board. And the ironic thing about it, you know, I just asked Megan Delaney to say, "You words of welcome," and I asked Matt to come up with some words of welcome as well, and the messages were both the same. It was collaborative, it was a team effort, it was supportive, you know, they're proud to be Pots Grove, you know, residents and teachers. You know, Matt brought that same flair to his talk. He brought his family members in, you know, as far as what Pots Grove has to offer, his family specifically. So, it was a real proud moment, and I was, you know, I made mention to that at the time because there was no planning to that. It just, it just happened, and it wouldn't happen unless we as a community, you as a board, continue to work together for the common goal of what's best for our kids. And, you know, my job at the end was just to sort of put it all together, to bring some focus to it, and set the tone for things that need to be accomplished in this upcoming school year. So, you know, for that particular point, it was a great event, and I obviously, I always wish you all could have been there, I understand with commitments you can't, but, you know, you as a board were well-represented, and our whole employee system, you know, was well-represented today with enthusiasm and pride in what they do, and I think you can't ask for anything more than that. I mean, as a district leader, it's just a way for us to get things done, and I just think it was a proud moment for me, and I think a proud moment for the district, we've come a long way in the last 12 months. So, appreciate your support, continue to look for your support in a lot of different ways, you know, but I think that, you know, it couldn't be done without all this, and I appreciate that support. So, thanks again.
If I could just piggyback, one thing I had taken away this morning was Pots Grove Family. Everybody mentioned Pots Grove Family. Welcome to the Pots Grove Family, and it was really, really nice. And also, the Pots Grove Education Foundation, I was able to hand awards out to the teachers that made, they got a coffee mug for five years, a bag for 10, and a certificate for 30. For 30 years, we had some awards today, which is really nice. But I took away Pots Grove Family, it really felt good.
Just to piggyback on the piggyback on the piggyback, I want to thank Mr. Alexander as well. The message he gave to the staff representing us as a board was right on, that we respect them, that we recognize that they're educational experts, and we look to them as we make board level decisions. So, I really appreciated that. I think it was an excellent kickoff to the year. I want to also say, I want to send Dr. Shirk an email, I didn't get to it yet, but kudos to Gary Durensis, who was at my first mandatory parent night for students that are going into sports. And not being athletic myself growing up due to medical issues, I, you know, have been a little apprehensive, and was put at, so much at ease, listening to Mr. Durensis, oh, I almost said Dr. Durensis, Mr. Durensis's philosophy on athletics and how it connects with education and so forth. So, I very much appreciate that. We heard earlier today, no, last night, I guess, from a gentleman, I say lightly, calling for peace in this country, and considering who it came from, I was kind of taken back, but glad that the call was made, and I'm hoping that as we start this school year, that we'll be able to work as a board at peace. I heard the term family word up. It's been talked over the past years, since first working united as a board, and I hope we can continue to do that. Perhaps we could have a workshop and make sure we're getting up on the right foot to talk about what a family looks like in regards to trust, confidentiality, honesty. We can disagree, we can have heated discussions, but really, there needs to be guidelines in when there's certain meetings that are confidential, that that information really stay where it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Anybody else on new business?
Just last week, Rick had brought up about teacher assignments being brought out early, and I mentioned about the, having school supplies was tied in with that. With the beginning of this school year, you know, teachers, administrators, you're all working really hard to get prepared. Parents are also trying to work to get their kids prepared to go back to school, and are anxious that their kids do the best. So, a lot of them are stressing out because even at the middle school and high school age, some teachers post what they need, the students need for the classroom, some don't, some put them in school G, some put them in different places on their teacher's page. The request would be if there's some way to, you know, some continuity so that a parent would know that, "Oh, my child's going into, you know, 7-1 team in the middle school. I can go here and find what my child will need." I imagine a lot of the supplies don't change from year to year, I'm sure there's some tweaking, but it'd be nice that if they were posted all year round so that parents could prepare with, well in advance, without having to stress about it, because I'm sure a lot of that stress goes on to the kids as well, and they're worried that their kids aren't gonna have something, so just, if something could be looked into to try to make it a little bit easier, well in advance, and anything that's gonna be a repeat could be posted all year round, I think would help a lot with some families.
I'll add that there have been a lot of posts on Facebook about supply lists, and my advice has been the same to everybody who has posted. Took me a few years to figure out that the best way to handle supplies is to wait a few days into the school year before you go out and buy every binder that every teacher says you need, because most of the time, half that stuff doesn't get used by your student. And I, so I agree with you, knowing early is good, but my counsel would still be wait because what your child actually needs may well differ from the suggested supply list by a teacher. And you can save a little bit of money if you're just a little cautious about when you buy all the stuff, so.
Well, then, that should be that the teacher should look at their supply list and say, "Well, you know what? They really don't use this. I put it down just as a safeguard. Remove those items so that it really is accurate."
I don't disagree with that, but the particular, the students themselves affect that decision, I would say.
Yeah, that's true. Yes. Okay. All right, thank you, Jim. All right, before we adjourn, any public comment on other items that came up tonight, non-agenda or otherwise? Okay, meeting adjourned then. Thank you, everyone.